Ready?
Yes.
I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for February 28, 2017 at 6:30 PM. Hello to everyone and happy National Tooth Fairy Day. Thought you all would like to know that. Tonight we'll be discussing-
It's also Fat Tuesday.
It's Fat Tuesday. Fat Tuesday and Tooth Fairy Day, those go well together. Tonight we'll be discussing the following items. North Clackamas Urban Watershed Council Annual Report, considering the North Clackamas County Water Commission Intergovernmental Agreement Name Change, consideration of the adoption of the 2017-2021 Strategic Plan, and City Council Liaison Appointments. Jackie, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Councillor Sickman?
Here.
Councillor Neese?
Here.
Councillor Johnson?
Here.
Councillor McMahon?
Here.
Councillor Reisner?
Here.
Councillor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stimpel?
Here.
Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Do we have any agenda additions or corrections?
One addition, Madam Mayor. It'll be an executive session at the end of the meeting, and that is pursuant to 192662H litigation filed or likely to be filed.
Okay. First thing then is business from the audience.
I have nothing, Madam Mayor.
Really? Wow, that makes it easy. All right. So, do we have, next to the consent agenda, anything, any questions, discussion on the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Councillor Kim Sickman and seconded by Councillor Lyndon Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda approved. Do we have any correspondence?
Yes, I have in the packet that provided a correspondence from Ms. Gary and Cindy Paxton. It has to do with the rental property business license. And I've not met the guy, so, there he is. Okay, so, he's here tonight. He may want to say a few words to you if you want to, if you, when it's time to recognize him. But, received this letter as it's dated on there, noted February 6th, and, you know, I don't want to go over what, what his issue is as far as the business license for his rental property. He may want to give you more information about that. But essentially, what I was wanting to do was to follow up on the public hearing, or it was not really a public hearing, I'm sorry. It was more of a work session that the council had organized back in, I believe it was March of, if I'm not mistaken, March or February, February, March. So it's been about a year, and there was a lot of discussion and agreement that, you know, there'd be some follow-up. Unfortunately, with all the things going on, I don't think we really followed up on some of the, some of the items. One of the things that, that we have done in the meantime, as you know, is we, we have dedicated the source of funding for business development, for the revenues that we receive annually for the business license, and I think that's somewhere in the hundred thousand-plus range. So that's really been the only action that the council has taken specifically. I know that there's been some conversation by certain councillors about, you know, hey, should we, we readdress this, and that's something that we can certainly talk about. One thing I will say is, the billing has already been out and the process is, you know, been initiated as far as the current, for this 2017 year. So, you know, if we really wanted to look at anything differently there, you know, we have some time before we would, you know, do the next billing, or it also could be, you know, something also we needed to address during the budget cycle, because right now we need to understand what, what we need to put in there in terms of a revenue source. So, Madam Mayor, if I, if I might, if, Gary, did you want to add anything to that, or did you have anything else you wanted to say?
Not at this point. I think the letter's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay.
And I appreciate the council taking a look at it, and hopefully, in the next budget session, something will be addressed.
Okay. Thank you. We've had a very busy couple of years, and this is an issue we keep wanting to discuss, and it just never quite percolates up. And then all of a sudden, it's the end of the year, and we're into the new year. I would very much like to see this be on an agenda somewhere this year, so that it's timely this time.
And I agree with, with Councillor Johnson that we, I'd like to see it too within, we look at early, before June or right after that, but definitely get it on the agenda for discussion.
I know you've been working on an agenda calendar.
Right.
Maybe you could see where that might fit on that and let us know.
I think, again, you know, preliminarily, we don't have to make a final decision, but I think budget time is a good, good, good opportunity there to address it, and then, and then from there, if we wind up getting some indication of where we want to head with it, then we can follow on with something more substantive as far as a review and more of a policy discussion on, you know, where we want to see the, see if there are any, any changes or any areas where we think there's some improvement, not only in rates, but, you know, in the areas that we currently are charging the license fees, so.
I also think SECs would be a companion item that we've been kicking down the road for several years also that should be addressed.
Are we in the Southeast Conference, or we-
Or SDC, I'm sorry.
SDC?
SDCs.
I'm a big fan of them.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm thinking basketball.
No, I got it, yeah, it's getting right around the corner, yes. SDCs, got it, yeah.
SDCs, thank you.
Yeah, we've got some, yeah, we've got some work there ahead of us as well, and we're, we'll be addressing that here very soon. And I say soon, I'm talking government time, probably in the next month or two, but, and so, that's, that's going to be very, very timely. We've got the sewer study that's going to be presented at our next council meeting during the work session. We've initiated a process to look at the stormwater SDC, because we currently don't have one in play, and started that notification process, and so I think we're going to have a pretty robust conversation about SDCs. And if the SEC does well, we might talk about that as well.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, well, my concern with this one is that this has been going on since March of 2016, and that he probably wants some kind of a decision or discussion about how to address his particular issue. So do we want to do that now? Do we want to just defer it to the budget process?
That's what I kind of, that's what I kind of heard from him, was that-
That it's okay to defer it?
Yeah, and, and address it from a revenue perspective, and then after that, policy.
Okay, and that's all right with you?
That'd be fine. There's also some communication back to me as to what's happening, that'd be very much appreciated as well.
Okay. Okay. Make sure that happens.
And I've done, just so you'll know, I've done some research on some of the other communities, on business license fees, and I really would like to have further discussion.
Okay.
And that's the reason why I was kind of putting it out, because I, I think we need to revamp it.
And will you consider bringing in maybe some businesses for-
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right. Any further discussion on this one? Any additional correspondence?
Do not, do not have any.
All right, well, then we move on to the regular agenda, and the first item is North Clackamas Urban Watershed Council, NCUWC, Annual Report with Andrew Collins Anderson, who is the Executive Director. Thanks for coming, Andrew.
Great. Madam Mayor and City Council, thanks for having me. My name is Andrew Collins Anderson, and I'm the Executive Director for the North Clackamas Urban Watersheds Council. And we are the watershed council that represents Reinerson Creek, as well as River Forest, Boardman, Kellogg, and Mount Scott Creeks as well. So all the small creeks that feed into the Willamette River between the Johnson Creek and the Clackamas River.
Including our Glen Echo Wetlands.
Including Glen Echo Wetlands, yes. So, a water, I'm sure, I don't know if all of you know what a watershed council is, but watershed councils are nonprofit organizations that are recognized by the state and the county as the representatives for these water bodies that I mentioned. I'll go over a little bit of the organization, and, and then some reasons why I'm here speaking to you tonight. We're run by about 10 or 11 voting board members who are representative of different watersheds, as well as different CPOs and people in the community. We currently do not have a representative from Gladstone, or someone who lives in the region, and we don't currently have a liaison from the city council and our board. We have members from West, Oak Lodge Water Services District, Milwaukee, as well as, we're working on trying to get someone back from Happy Valley. We have, and also representatives from NCPRD, who sit on our board. We were founded in 2009, which is pretty new for watershed councils. Folks like the Clackamas River Basin Council have been around a lot longer, and they have a lot bigger watershed, but we're focused mostly here on these smaller watersheds that are highly impacted by urban development. And it's, it's a tricky job trying to balance the needs of the salmon, the watersheds, as well as all the folks who live in the, along the creeks. So these are some of our partners. We also partner with folks like ODFW, Metro, DEQ, the local watershed councils, and other nonprofit organizations. We're funded mainly by the Clackamas Soil and Water Conservation District, Oak Lodge Sanitary District, Water Environment Services, Metro, the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, and a couple other small grants. This is a short map of our watershed, Reinerson Creek, which flows through Gladstone, is the smallest watershed down here at the bottom in green. But it's, it plays an important role in fish habitat, being there right at the mouth of the Clackamas River. Juvenile fish use it for rearing. And we currently have an active project through our Streamside Stewards Program. That is a program that is pretty much the organization's flagship program. We work with private landowners to restore their streamfront property by removing invasive plants and then planting native plants. The goal of that is to improve the water quality, improve habitat, and secure banks from erosion, a couple other things involved in that. We currently have 142 landowners involved in that program, and several in Gladstone, including multiple properties between River Road and the city-owned properties at Reinerson Pond, and that's a project funded through Metro. I've talked to Mr. Wynot, Public Works Director, for that program, and it's, we're actually currently doing work on that. We also have many properties throughout the other jurisdictions I mentioned, unincorporated Clackamas County, Happy Valley. We currently only have a few in Milwaukee. We work to engage landowners in protecting their natural areas. We do site visits, and we hire professional restoration crews to do the registration work, and then we teach the landowners how to maintain the properties after they're done. And we do other public outreach and education events. We just had one up on Kellogg Creek the other day, talking about flooding issues there. That's a major concern for the watershed council in an urban area. We've seen lots of, I've been with the council for a year now, and I came on December where, you know, December 7th, when, and 6th, when there was the major flooding event, one of the biggest recorded, or if not the biggest. So, that flooding issue is definitely a big concern for me. But we also do fun things with folks from the Clackamas Water Providers. We do, we participate in the Celebrating Water Event. We actually came to your community event here, the Gladstone Community Festival, I believe, and presented there, or had a table. And we do paddles on the, on the Willamette. We do natural area cleanups on whole Swanson is one, one area where we do cleanup every year with Solve. So we're engaged in many different aspects in the community. Like I mentioned, flooding is a major concern for the watershed council, and we've been working with the different agencies and cities that I mentioned to help provide solutions and bring funding for water storage and flood control projects to help benefit the issues that we see with flooding. We work with folks like the Wetlands Conservancy and other larger nonprofits to bring some of those projects into the area. We're also beginning the discussion to start a stormwater retrofit program, where we're working with businesses to improve stormwater facilities there to reduce high flows. So, basically, where I'm getting at is that the watershed council is a great forum for folks to get involved in, to talk about these regional issues, from habitat to water quality to flooding, with other surrounding jurisdictions. We meet monthly, every third Wednesday, at the Oak Lodge Sanitary District Office, and we currently are, just moved into our first office, where I signed a lease yesterday at the Milwaukee Presbyterian Church. So, we're, we're working really hard to try to bring folks together and come to some solutions for these issues in the community. So, I invite everyone else too to, to learn more and get involved. I put some annual reports on the table back there. Folks who want to get my information, and I have a card here, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Are you involved with the Reinerson Pond Project, and are you aware of what's going on there? So, that's another, thank you. The organization was, at the beginning, working in part with John Runyon, when that was, when he was involved. We had Hal Bush, who came and presented to our council on a regular basis, and he was providing that information. In the year that I've been with the council, I haven't heard anything about it. I haven't, I've talked to some landowners, but that's about it. Okay.
We don't know.
So, I'd like to be involved. And I've reached out to Gary Howard at the Wetlands Group. Yep. It's been, he's been very hard to get ahold of. I've not been able to reach him. And then if you talk to Bobby Proud, that'd probably be your best contact. I've, I've- I'll get one of your cards, and I'll give you some information. Great, I'll leave it on that. Because I, I took Hal's spot kind of, as far as the liaison working with that project. Great, yeah, I'd love to learn more and maybe sit down and talk about that. We got our fingers crossed.
We need a liaison for, we'll have that decided by the end of the meeting today.
I'll, yes, indeed.
So our biggest issue is the storm surge flooding that we get coming down through the Boardman watershed.
Definitely.
So, what I hope is that if we get more involved with your group, that you can help us find solutions, either rest-
Yeah.
You know, the Boardman Creek watershed needs to be fixed holistically, instead of having Band-Aids put all over the place that really are not fixing it at all. So, I know that's on some people's radar, to start pulling together stakeholders group and really look at it.
Definitely.
There's some options for some additional funding if we can show that it impacts positively our infrastructure, as far as not needing some stormwater upgrades that we would normally have to have. So, hopefully, that's something that you guys would get on board with and support us in that.
Yeah, we'd definitely be happy to help. I've talked to Mr. Wynot about the Glen Echo Wetlands there and reconnecting Reinerson Creek, and I know they're all connected at the top there, at the Boardman Wetlands, and we're a great place to talk about those issues in, you know, a collaborative manner with all the different folks involved. We worked also with Clackamas County Disaster Management Department, who had to deal with, you know, FEMA buyouts and repeat loss properties, and so there's some definitely funding from FEMA and things like that that we can bring in as well.
Great. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, thanks for having me. I, yeah, appreciate it.
All right, the next thing in our agenda is consider the North Clackamas County Water Commission Intergovernmental Agreement Name Change.
So, I'll just very briefly, I guess, reintroduce this issue. At your last council meeting, you had a pretty good discussion with Mr. Dan Bradley and representatives from the now Oak Lodge Water Services District, about the possibility of changes to the IGA and that North Clackamas County Water Commission specifically. So, one thing I just, as if you recall, at the end of that meeting, it was proposed that maybe the commission could have two, consider two IGAs, one that would just be recognizing the, essentially, the transfer of authority, in our view, really amounts to a name change from Oak Lodge Water to the Oak Lodge Water Services District. And so that's what's before you tonight. I mean, it really is essentially assigning and acknowledging that Oak Lodge Water District has now been combined into a sanitary sewer and water supplier district. The reality is, is that all this does is make Oak Lodge Water Services District the successor for basically any rights that Oak Lodge Water had, and any obligations Oak Lodge Water has for all agreements, including the IGAs that you have. So, my recommendation is to adopt the IGA, changing that reference from OLWD to Oak Lodge Water Services District.
I'd be happy to make that motion.
Any discussion first?
I, I just think we need to, I'm sorry. I just think we need to continue the conversation that we started a couple of weeks ago, and going through the, the whole IGA and making updates where those are needed.
But this is just the name change piece of it.
That's all it is?
That's all it is, just the, so, I don't know how anyone else-
Is it being seconded?
No, we were still having discussion.
The motion hasn't been made.
It hasn't been made yet.
Still, still getting to the motion, remember?
Yeah, we're still getting to the motion. Any more discussion before we start getting thrown around? All right, go for it, Steve.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the addendum to, addendum number two to the second amended intergovernmental agreement for the North Clackamas County Water Commission, making Oak Lodge Water Services District a member of the commission.
Aye, second.
Motion's been made by Councillor Johnson and seconded by Councillor Mercero. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Madam Mayor? If I may, Dan, if you could introduce the folks that are here, I think we've got a couple new, new folks from your organization here, yeah.
Okay, so I'm Dan Bradley. I'm the General Manager of Oak Lodge Water Services, and thank you for tonight. That's Early Platt, he is on the Sunrise Water Authority Board, also a member of North Clackamas County Water Commission. Jim Martin is Chair of Oak Lodge Water Services Board and a member of the commission. And that's Ron Blake, he's the Chair of Sunrise Water Authority and also a member of the commission.
Thank you very much for coming.
And thank you for the vote. It was important to us. And we'll be talking tomorrow.
All right.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to consider adoption of the 2017-2021 Strategic Plan.
Madam Mayor, if, if I may, I'll, I'll turn this over to our Assistant City Administrator. Jackie has been central to a lot of this, putting this together, so, Jack, if you would want to walk us through it, please?
Sure, thank you. Mayor, Council, what you have before you this evening is a summary of the strategic planning work session that the city council and the department head team held on January 2016. In your packet, we have what we're calling a report card on year 2016, since this is a five-year strategic plan. It's 2016 through 2020. And what we did was we broke down the objectives and the goals, and we gave ourselves a score. And the department head team then did a presentation to the elected officials on how much progress or how little progress we felt that we made that first year on our objectives and goals. Then also in your packet, you have Exhibit B, which are notes from the original 2016 Strategic Plan. And the reason why those are in your packet is because the subcommittee that met after the strategic planning session, which consisted of the councillors, Steve Johnson, Pat McMahon, Kim Sickman, Eric Swanson, and myself, Steve Johnson wanted to make sure that those notes were brought before you this evening, because they weren't really discussed at the strategic planning session. And the reason they're in the packet is because there are two additional goals that were added to the strategic plan, and Exhibit C that we didn't discuss at the strategic planning session, and they will provide comments on why they feel that those should be included before you adopt it. So as you go to Exhibit C, what you have is now a draft plan of the years 2017, 2021. So each year, we will roll up the strategic plan, and the only addition that we added under core values was citizen engagement, which everybody feels that citizens' engagement is very important, and we wanted to make sure that that now became a core value in our strategic plan. You have a colored document, so you can see under the objectives, the items in red are additions, and of course, the items in red strike-throughs are either the changes in the verbiage of where we are on a current goal, or something that's been completed, so we removed that. It's pretty easy to read through, and I believe the two new goals that we added, that I will let councillors Johnson and Sickman discuss, are under 5.7 and 5.8 on the last page, which is consider the feasibility of an annexation strategy and policy, and consider the feasibility of a surplus property study. The objective that we place that under is to ensure financial stewardship and long-term municipal financial stability. So overall, I would say that the department heads and the elected officials believe that the city had made some great progress this past year. What is really unique and nice about having a strategic plan is that they provide benchmarks so that the community can see where our focus is with financial resources and staff time. And so if we deviate from what is on this plan and bring something before council to consider that's a policy or a project, we will have to provide an explanation on the staff report as to why we believe that that item should be considered if it doesn't align with the strategic plan. So that summarizes the report. If you have any questions, the subcommittee would be happy to answer those.
Any discussion, any questions?
I do have to admit that I somewhere along the line missed that day, and I was not at the subcommittee. I think I made the later, I made the 3 o'clock meeting, but not the 2 o'clock or something, so I apologize for that.
We, we did bring Pat up to speed somewhat at that 3 o'clock meeting, so, yeah.
If I could, I'd also want to just recognize LB Day's contribution to this process. I think he was very good at getting us to where we wound up, and I, and I think we're in a good, good place. One thing I'll add to Jackie's comments, which were really good, I think, as we move forward with agenda items, we'll reference these, these goals and objectives as part of the, as part of the staff report. So we continually try to keep the, the strategic plan an active and living sort of document for the city and for, you know, you as policymakers. So, just, we look, we on the outlook for that, I think that'll help us keep it relevant and, and, you know, something that, that will really guide us as we get in, especially as we get into the upcoming budget process. I would be happy to make a motion.
Well, I have some questions.
Okay, all right.
Under objectives, all of this looks wonderful. I agree with everything, but my concern is, looking at these individually, where do we get a more deeper dive into what this means? Is that something that comes into play in, in department reports? Is it in a, in a handbook? Where do we get the details? Like, ensure our workers are motivated and have a great work-life balance. That sounds warm and fuzzy and wonderful, but what does that mean, and what are we going to do to ensure that? That was just an example.
Yeah, and again, you know, so we're, we're at the, the objective phase of that, so, you know, again, it'll, it'll come out in future.
Okay.
Could be reports, you know, opportunities, you know, we would start- Could be reports, you know, opportunities, you know, we would start to talk about employee recognition programs. I think those are the kind of ideas, without getting into the details, that would fall potentially in those, and we certainly have had discussion and a plan to have those kind of things.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, you know, that we actually move towards implementing these and have a plan besides just 3.1, 3.2, 3.3.
I think that staff did some of that at the retreat, where they did scores on these things.
Right.
And they discussed, they didn't have handouts, but they discussed them verbally. So, I mean, they're already doing some of that.
Okay.
And have done some of it, so.
Yeah, just something concrete.
Right.
Okay.
And the other part of that, I think, is, you know, this is high-level goals and objectives.
Right, right.
And it's, as policy setters, we set the goals and objectives, and then staff implements them, and how they choose to implement them, as long as they're reaching the goal-
Right.
-is more of a staff.
No, I agree. I don't need the details, but I just want to make sure that there are details and that they're being followed through.
Yeah, again, I think describing this as kind of a framework-
Okay.
-for, you know, the way forward, so I think that would be another way to look at this.
You got yellow on yours, Neil?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
It just notes for the future. Uh, thank you.
When, I guess this is kind of a question, when, if and when we adopt this, this has included everything that was in the first plan, which never got adopted. So this would actually be adopting the current plan, which would include all the information that was in the last plan, and that would exop, it would also adopt Exhibit B from-
And I think we've pretty well addressed all those.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's something else worth mentioning, so this is sort of monumental in that we've actually, we're going to actually have an adoption on one. We kind of, we kind of, as our, on our first trial through, we kind of operated off a draft, so I think that's important to note, we're actually at a point where we can have the council consider adopting this formally, so that's good.
You know, we've made some progress, you can see it in the line-outs, things like explore by annual budget process, that's done. I know right-of-way was in here someplace, and that's done. Complete pavement and condensation survey, that's done. You know, right-of-way management, and you can see where things are redlined out. I mean, we've already made some progress on this, and it's a five-year plan, so it doesn't necessarily mean that everything happens on year one.
And I have a question on the research the feasibility of Gladstone and fiber network. Is, now, that is something new that was added, it wasn't in the last?
It wasn't the last, it's actually been in all of them.
Okay.
It just did not make it in as part of our last retreat.
Okay, all right.
I thought we were moving forward with that, or are we just in the research phase?
Well, there's two things you might be thinking of there. So part of completing, we implemented, completing the technology plan is actually getting fiber to all the city facilities, and we're, like you said, we're well into the feasibility and ready to hopefully bring back a contract for the council to award to go ahead and implement that.
Okay, so these are two separate, so the Gladstone fiber network is more city-wide?
It's more, city-wide, more of a, kind of like if you look at what Sandy did in terms of their Sandy Net, and really looking at, is it feasible for us to look at like a Google Fiber at a very attractive rate that could be really a quality-of-life kind of issue for the residents? And allow, what we're seeing more and more is, you know, the commuter, commute-from-home kind of, you know, work out of the house that would definitely provide those kind of opportunities, and probably gets a lot more amenable when you look at the kind of the traffic that you see, you know, between here and Portland, so.
And Eric, with what you've just said, is, I was at a meeting just last week, and it was interesting because that came up.
Right.
And how that really is working in Sandy, and how it's very cost-effective, and they have increased the number of people who are participating, and the gentleman said that, I think it was last Wednesday or Thursday, anyway, that, they had five people additionally sign up, and he said it's continuing to growing, and they're moving out further towards Mount Hood. And the cost is good for the community because it's really affordable, much less than Comcast. So I think it's good that we're reviewing this and moving on it.
So the Clackamas fiber ring, that's like off, I mean, is that like a standalone? I mean, I think they were intention, it was intended to be something that the communities could connect to, if I'm right.
For public services.
It's just for public services. They put that whole entire ring in just for public services.
There may be, there may be dark fiber associated with that that they considered a lease-out, but they aren't, the project itself was to get schools, you know, cities-
That was an expensive project.
We would use part of the CBIX ring to make this project work.
Okay.
And quite frankly, we're using it right now, that's where we're getting some of our internet service from, is from the-
So it's not wasted.
-Clackamas County Education, I'm not sure where, we were there, I don't remember what it called.
ESC, ESC.
Yes, the, and the fiber, the ring, literally runs on a phone pole right behind here.
Oh, wow.
I mean, it's right here, goes right up Portland Avenue, right out to the Gophers.
Awesome.
So there's going to be links coming all the way, if they are already in place, I haven't kept track, all the way to the Pettuck Building in downtown Portland, which is the main meet-me room location for this area. So everybody is there in a co-opt router stack, and that is where Comcast, CenturyLink, Frontier, and a whole bunch of others, Google, all connect in, and that's, if you want to know where the center of the internet is, that's kind of one of the centers.
The center of the universe, it's right there.
For us. I mean, the other closest one is probably going to be San Jose or El Salt Lake.
Oh, really?
To get into long-haul fiber, but we're not likely to do that sort of thing. But there's both the connection to a center internet point, and then there's the feeders out to homes and businesses. This fiber network is the feeders out.
Oh, okay, the final termination point.
Right, and the technology plan is to connect city buildings, and there is envisioned that the fiber that's going in could be used as a backbone for this.
Okay.
Because when you put in fiber cable, there are multiple fibers in a cable, it's not just one pair, there are many.
You're planning for future growth.
That is what they have planned for, so.
Okay.
I would also say that other cities besides Sandy are looking at this. West Lynn is seriously considering it.
Yeah, they were just talking about it.
Like Oswego has considered it, they kind of went a different direction, I think probably because they have a lot of high-tech firms within their city, they were going through a public-private partnership, their council got a little nervous about that because they were having to underwrite a large part of it. I would expect to see that again from like Oswego, and I don't think that that's a dead issue there. So we're not being unique, and I think that with, if you look at Sandy's price, they're charging $39.95 a month for 300 meg by 300 meg connections to the home. For all intents and purposes, that's unlimited, all you can eat, nobody is going to be able to use that up in a home environment. So much faster, much cheaper, fiber is much more reliable than copper, so.
I think the other thing that we talked about in the committee meeting was, you asked about if it was in last year's plan. On page 54, 1.8 is implement the technology plan, and it was scored a five because the plan has been implemented, and most of the technology plan, other than researching the fiber, is in process and going to be completed soon. And so that was, that was the one thing that hadn't been started yet, and so it kind of required its own separate line item in order to keep it on there. It's still part of the technology plan, so that's why it stays under 1.8.
Okay.
I think I heard a rumor in April, right? Is that what they were thinking, they were going to start stringing that fiber to Public Works?
Yeah, I mean, the last, last update I got is they're pretty close to completing it, and they've had a few last questions, but again, we'll be able to take that, take that document, it's an engineering study, and then roll it into a bid document. So, yeah, I would imagine by April, we'll have it ready to bid out, and, you know, then you'll see stuff going in, which, you know, I can't overemphasize the importance of having all of our city operations connected, you know, there's a lot of reasons that that is going to make a huge difference for us efficiency-wise.
No phone company to pay to link the sites together.
Exactly.
Monthly payment.
So how does the broadband push that's coming soon through FirstNet and other agencies, how does that impact fiber? Is that a completely separate animal, or does that tie in somehow?
Who is FirstNet?
FirstNet is, their, the first rollout is going to be for the 911 services, and then it's supposed to go out nationwide for commerce. But I don't know if it's fiber-based, or I don't understand broadband very much, but I know that's-
The best way, and this is again, talking to the Sandy folks for quite a while, is sort of comparing this to like a Google Fiber-
That's FirstNet, look up.
...kind of setup, which is, you know, as Steve mentioned earlier, it's fairly, I mean, it's very robust in terms of what it offers. And so anything, we really wouldn't be looking at any, competing with the private sector because there would not be that kind of an investment ever made in a place like Gladstone. So what this is trying to do is be proactive about that and provide that type of service well before any kind of, of course, you know, it's always changing, but at this point, we, that's one of the reasons why these cities are looking at this hard, because they want to be in that, in that mode earlier and offered as a, you know, again, quality-of-life. One thing, just going back to the Sandy example, I think they underbid the amount of bond money available, if they were to do it again, they would have probably doubled, I think they went up for a $7 million bond, they would have, they felt like they could have, they should have doubled it to give them more ability to-
Yeah, they took seven and a half, they were thinking closer to 10 or 12 would have been appropriate.
Yeah.
Because it slowed their final push down, they don't have the money to do it.
And does that just serve the more rural groups?
It's to serve the whole city, they've still got people who want hookups in the city.
The way I understood it, they ran out of money for putting the fiber in before they ran out of customers willing to pay for it.
And this is all ran overhead, or is it trenched at all?
I think in Gladstone, it would be both.
Dominant.
Because you've got-
Which is their way to, if they're trenching for this, we could leave that trench for something else?
Yeah, I mean, that's one, I guess, if you can think of an advantage of having a difficult water and sewer distribution collection-
Right.
-is that we have a lot of opportunity to replace some lines, and-
Yeah, piggyback off that.
-the idea would be to do it at the same time, is to, that would be part of the study.
Perfect. Any more discussion? Somebody want to make a motion?
I move that we approve the City of Gladstone Strategic Plan for years 2017 to 2021.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Councilor Johnson and seconded by Councilor McMahon. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then passed. All right. Now, the last thing on our regular agenda is the City Council Liaison Appointments, and I did make a couple tweaks, so Jackie's going to hand it out. So while she's handing that out, first I want to thank all of the committee, board, commission members, citizens, regional partners, that gave me feedback on who they felt was the best fit for these appointments. When I put it out there, I promised to consider all of the information that I got and to appoint accordingly. Some I disagreed with, but I feel that the best way to move forward with my promise was to recommend what they had sent me. So the process has been challenging, more than I thought it was going to be. I would have preferred to wait till today, but it was important that people kind of get an idea of where I stood yesterday. That's, so I'm sorry that I made a couple more adjustments. So I decided to recommend 100% along the lines of what the community recommendations were. The only position that we really didn't get a whole lot of feedback on was the police, so that one, I took it upon myself. So there it is, let's discuss it. I do, there are a couple changes that I've already thought about, so one of them is, let's see, did I add it, including the North Clackamas Urban Watershed Council, I think I did stick that, yeah, under Parks and Rec, so that was the big change. And then also, the other change that I would like to make, and I don't know how you guys want to work this, is under Public Works, I felt since most of the master plans are almost done, and the sewage issue is hopefully at the back end of it, I kind of grouped them all together, which makes it a really big liaison responsibility. So I would like to bring Steve in as a primary and somehow figure out how we can collaborate on that, because it is such a big liaison appointment. And I appreciate Steve has got a ton of history there, and I think it's important that we have that continually forward. But hopefully, the big issue that you've had to deal with for so long is kind of waning, and we can move towards bigger ones. It's the public work.
Which big issue are you talking about?
The sewer, the sewer district issue.
Water and sewer.
And the water and sewer, yeah.
I don't think that's gone away yet.
No, but I'm saying, there's a lot of work that's already been put into it, and now we're towards, hopefully, the end-ish of it.
I'm not sure that's true.
Okay, well-
I think there's some things that are percolating still in wastewater. I had a meeting with Oregon City Mayor Dan Holliday Saturday.
Okay.
And I think there are still some big issues there to come up.
Okay, then that just makes it more important that we have a group that can go in there and do what needs to be done. So, um-
Well, I'm really confused as to the role. I mean, I'm not sure what you're talking about there. I mean, I was on the Tri-City Advisory Committee and the Regional Wastewater, and I think there's going to be a regional wastewater of some kind. I know that that was-
Hopefully, yeah.
I know that that was contentious, but for now at least, some of those decisions have been made, and I have a lot of history and a lot of knowledge there, I'd just continue to use it. So who's going to sit on those boards?
Well, the, we, the board doesn't exist right now. Right now, the county is the governing body, and they're not letting any of the cities come to the table. And that's what needs to be decided, is the cities need to come together and make a case and go after the county to allow us at the table. Right now, we're not allowed at the table.
Regional wastewater was never a governing body, they were pretty clear about that. It was a Regional Wastewater Capacity Advisory Committee, did I get that right, Kevin?
However they, whatever they call themselves, but it's the governing body.
Okay, I mean-
It's the people that are making, making the decisions right now, and it's not us, and it's not any of the other cities.
It never was, but they-
It needs to be.
They, well, I agree it needs to be.
Yeah.
But that, that body is, has been their advisory committee, and commission has wanted CCSD and Tri-City Advisory Committees to go away and be replaced by the Regional Wastewater Committee.
Yeah, which is the county.
So who's going to sit on that committee? I'm sure it's still going to continue.
Well, can you and Tammy be a part of that together? And I mean, because you've been involved, and then with, and as her position and everything, so can the two of you work there together?
Tag team it, yeah.
Well, somebody has to sit on the board, I mean, on the advisory committee. Right now, the other councilors and mayors are, there's only one from each city.
Okay.
Well, I guess as soon as that advisory committee is formed, then we can make that decision internally, or do you want to make that decision right now?
Um-
Because I don't know what that's going to look like, I don't know what they're going to allow.
Well, I would be surprised if they didn't pull the Regional Wastewater Committee back together. I mean, they were very insistent that they wanted that to be the committee. And yes, there is an effort amongst the cities to try to bring some governance to this.
Yes.
I don't know that that will succeed, but I'm all for it. I think that ratepayers should be governing these things and not out-of-towners, but whether that'll happen or not, I don't know.
Yeah, well, we need to try, we need to do whatever we can.
Can I add something to that? I finally got all the great guys, I think you guys were on a very long email back and forth, so we talked at six o'clock tonight, actually, and he will be addressing that at the next meeting.
Okay.
But he's pretty, pretty, I wouldn't say evasive, but it's pretty, it's not really, you know, they've just got a new commissioner, they're still in that transmission, transition mode, and have, you know, but they, you know, I think he'll recognize that that's something that has to be the governance question. but they, you know, I think he'll recognize that that's something that has to be, the governance question has to be addressed. And I'm, and I, I guess we're hearing, like Steve mentioned earlier, that other cities are also interested in that, so I-
Yeah, I had breakfast with a, um, a couple of the other councilors and mayors last weekend and that, this is what they're, they're gonna pull for pretty heavily.
Right.
And what about water?
Do you wanna do water?
Yes.
Okay, that's yours. But that's part of public work, so I want it to be the three of us to split it up because I think it's a, a really big issue, especially with all the master plans being done. But I think it needs to be cohesive. Kim, you're on that too.
Okay.
Is that all right with you guys?
I don't think it's gonna require that much. I think you've got-
Well, public works, I'm a, I'm, I'm pulling the infrastructure into that. So it's gonna be buildings, it's gonna be water, sewer, storm. It's gonna be a lot of things, but I want, I want it to be cohesive, for sure. But I just don't think that each of those pieces should be pulled out separately because they all-
They are separate though. You have the-
But they, but they all work together, like the, the fiber. Oh, well, if we're digging trenches, then why don't we think about putting in stormwater or sewer or water? I think that there needs to be some connections with all of those pieces.
There are, there are the connections with all those pieces, but you got inside entities inside the city and then you've got regional districts outside of the city.
Right.
And they should be separate, um, pieces because, as you mentioned, you've got master plans for, uh, several public works entities. But you've also got water and sewer issues through regional departments that are completely separate that we can still communicate as we, as we do. But to try and lump them all into one, I think that's problematic.
Okay. I disagree. I think that it needs to be-
This is your recommendation? I understand that.
Yeah, no, it is my recommendation, but it's definitely worth talking about. Well, should we just start at the top then and move our way down? How do we wanna do this? Or do you guys wanna grab it, take it, we'll talk about it at the next meeting? How do you wanna proceed?
I would much rather do that. Uh, if we could have until the, the next council meeting, I would be much happier so that, number one, this just came to me yesterday and then the big changes that I see today that just came ten minutes ago, I would prefer to mull on a little bit more and have more discussions with you in particular and with the other council. And, and I would prefer to do that versatile tonight. I think that would work, um,
I would, I would be for that.
Much more favorably if we were to mull this over for the two weeks or three weeks and when we're here on the fourteenth,
That's fine.
Make a decision.
We don't need to make a motion to do that.
No, I think, uh, other staff will stand by if there's anything, anything we can do to help.
Okay. So, the next thing then is business carried forward.
Um, just real briefly, I was, if I can, uh, and a mayor, I'll just talk again about the wastewater, um, stormwater master plan that's happening in a work session next week. And then the West's, uh, differen- differential rate decision. As I said, I've talked to Greg and, um, we've kind of agreed upon kinda some of the areas that I think we both believe-
That was the email that you sent out with all the bullet points?
Yeah, so it, it, he'll be addressing those, plus he's got a few, few that he also wants to, uh, include there. Including sort of a discussion about how we deal with the I and I as partners, you know, potentially looking at ways that we can look, you know, cause they don't wanna be treating stormwater if they don't have to. So there's, there's some gains for both, both Gladstone and, and West will be working on that. Also, pretty positive response to the good neighbor idea. So we'll have a little bit more, um, discussion about how we, how we initiate that and the timing and how that, that comes together. So, uh, just wanted to throw that out there. The Community Festival application will be here next week. You've probably seen some emails looking at some in-kind, um, services that we provide. And just to, as a follow-on to that, we will be bringing that up in the budget process of looking at establishing, sort of tracking the in-kind, uh, costs, which will be in all the different budgets. It won't be called out as separate, but it'll be, it'll be at least addressed and there'll be a process. Probably at the same time that we have our public hearing, uh, for the budget. We will, you know, have those, those requests come in and the budget committee can review those requests at that time. Both the in, both the in-kind and the, and the, uh, the actual budget ones like we get from the firemen and, and from the, uh, senior.
Has it always been so expensive for the groups to, to help with the Community Festival? I was really shocked at the price it-
Yeah, it's not cheap when you start talking about-
No, that was, that was really shocking.
And I, and I think it's, I think it's, it's good information just so that we know, you know, that, and I think, uh, Dr. Bob's idea was just recognizing the amount that the city does, does provide. And I, and I think, and I think it's a good, it's an important thing we're doing. And so I, but I think it's, it's also important to recognize what, what that is in terms of primarily personnel costs.
Yeah.
So, anyway, just, just a quick update on that. I don't know, you know, going out a little further, uh, we're, we're gonna be looking at the municipal ordinance, uh, code enforcement revisions. And then we're gonna combine that with, um, the EFCI report that was recently completed by the Fire Department. So we're anticipating that those two work sessions may involve us starting the, the regular city council meeting later, then six-thirty, maybe like seven, seven-thirty. But, but I thought we, we'd wanna, um, have that discussion ahead of the, the budget. So we've kinda doubled, uh, both those efforts, both with the code enforcement revisions and the EFCI report.
So you're saying a work session prior to the council meeting then?
Two of them, yeah. Which may, which will delay the start time of the, of the regular city council meeting. But we wanted to get that, get those, they're important discussions and they're timely. And we didn't wanna, wanna kinda make sure we had them sooner rather than later. So, anyway, those are just a couple highlights, uh, looking, looking into the future for city council.
All right. So next is the second opportunity for business from the audience. Do we have anything?
I have nothing further.
Wow, you guys are a quiet crowd tonight. All right, business from the council. Kim?
As the schools had their makeup days, uh, we had our makeup day for the downtown revitalization open house last week. I know there was actually letters sent out and everything else, but attendance wasn't real good. I think there was probably about twenty people there that weren't staff, um, or already involved. So we're gonna definitely need to try and reach out to a few more people for the next open house. There was a lot of ideas brought forth, even though it was a small group. And I think it's gonna be pretty neat when it's all said and done. That's all I have.
I had the opportunity last week of, um, doing mock interviews with the high school. So that was for seniors. So that was really enjoyable and met some really great students and, uh, very nervous students, but did an excellent job. But it was a great opportunity to get to, to get involved with the high school, so I was real thankful for that. And one of the things, since we're talking about general fund and I belonged, got roped into Kiwanis. So I go to the meetings and, and bless their hearts, but anyway, they want to do a flag program. So they are going to be coming before the council and the city to talk about flags.
Flying flags?
Yes. And I've told them to do their homework, get their ducks in a row and pull everything together of how much money they're going to need. But one of the questions, Jim, and if you could help us, would really appreciate it, is are there any holes in the sidewalks down Portland Boulevard that have been in the past? And can they be used in the future or do they have to make new holes to do the flag poles with? And they only wanna do this on special occasions and holidays. And so, I just wanna, yeah, and if you could just do that and help me out, I'd appreciate it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Council Johnson?
So, Eric and I met with Milwaukee City Manager Ann Ober and newly-minted Milwaukee City Councilor Shane Abma. He do, I was gonna say, who used to work for BEH, in fact, used to be our attorney. Uh, we had, uh, one of our attorneys when David wasn't here. We had a good conversation and it primarily revolved around our favorite subject, wastewater. You know, Milwaukee does have Kellogg Creek and they have some interest in that and, uh, so. But I think it was a positive meeting and, uh, uh, we look forward to meeting again. I, I think that was, that was a good place. And as I said before, I've also met with Oregon City Mayor Dan Holliday to talk about wastewater again and governance and some of those things. And so I don't think that that one's, I don't think that one's put bad yet, but, uh, I think that there'll be some interesting things, uh, coming out of that. Library, we can talk about that, right? The mediation? Okay, all right. Uh, tomorrow, Mayor Stempel and Councilor Nice and I are going to be at the county and are going to be, and are going to be in mediation on the library issue. Uh, we have a mediator. He was gonna keep an eye on us, cause I'm not sure all this is gonna work, but, uh, they want us to be there. On the other side will be Commission Chair Bernard and Commissioner Savas, as well as some of their staff members. And Jackie will be there, uh, Eric will be available by, by phone. He's gonna be serving our country and doing the, the Air Force Reserve thing. So, um, so that's happening tomorrow. Um, what else?
Rules and responsibilities do that for me, so I forgot it.
Uh, well, which part?
Well, with our meeting and then the next meeting coming up.
Okay, next meeting of rules and responsibilities is March fifteenth, which is the day after our next meeting. If there wa, if there's a desire to have citizen involvement, we should probably have that in our packet for March fourteenth.
Right.
So we can consider it for then. I think that's all I have. Thank you all for coming. Have a good night.
Neil, have a good night.
A question if I may. We had, uh, uh, set a, uh, April date as being, being done with those, so-
I think we are all on schedule with this. As, as we were last time we talked with, with Jackie and Eric, I, I think we're all on schedule with this. I think we're planning on two more meetings. Did I get that right?
Yep.
Yeah, we've got the dates.
March fifteenth is the next one.
Bye, sir.
Sure. Attended a emergency operations management training last night that the county put on, learning about what elected officials, I'm not sure if that's the exact title, but, uh, in essence, what elected officials, uh, role in, in disasters. That generally we are not the ones out there with the shovels, though if all else fails, I guess we would be. But, uh, what the process is, uh, per state law and federal law with how, um, emergencies are declared. And it was very enlightening, refreshing. I got to go to one about four years ago and things have changed since then. And one thing that I was hoping, it kind of, um, piggyback on what, you know, the discussion we had a couple of weeks ago, is that, um, I think as, as a team, uh, sitting up here, we need to role-play maybe some scenarios in, in the future, if, if possible. And I think as, just as a, you know, a whole city with, uh, would be something that would be beneficial to everybody. With Jim, maybe with, uh, Cert, you know, later on in the year, you know-
Probably planned something, part of that.
So, just, just something that, uh, I'd like to-
At least a tabletop or some kind of a-
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So, that's all I have. Thank you. And I appreciate you, appreciate you guys being here.
I have nothing other than I'd like to be the one that calls nine-one-one for this thing cause I've got some good stories and I'll just- Tabletop, I wanna be the one calling in and you guys can just work through what I create.
It's ironic in that the tabletop that they, we didn't, we ran out of time, we didn't get to do it, was a earthquake, um, seven-point-something, uh, along Oakfield Road.
There goes our house, Kevin. Gone. Okay, Council Merstrow?
Yeah, but, yeah, yeah.
Well, my, my mind hasn't quite been on city business in the last while. But I would like to, uh, thank, uh, my family, which there isn't any here at the moment, and friends and people and acquaintances and the citizens that have, uh, given me a bunch of help in the last few weeks. So, thank you very much.
Okay. All right, I'm last. So, Friday, February twenty-fourth, I was honored to be invited to an event at the Portland Art Museum called I Am Not Invisible. This event was held to honor women veterans and active members of the military. And these are the people that generally go unnoticed and unrecognized for their service to our country. I was humbled by their pictures and by their stories. And I was deeply disturbed by the fact that in two thousand seventeen, we are having a discussion about women in any field or capacity being discriminated against, harassed, bullied, or forgotten. The group of women recognized at this event pushed through and accomplished amazing things despite the obstacles. One honoree is Elaine, the daughter of Gladstone resident Mindy Garlandton, who is a beautiful one, young woman who's already got amazing experiences due to the military. So what I would like to see is if you know of someone that's a woman veteran, ask her her story and thank her for what she did. We have twenty-eight thousand women veterans in just the state of Oregon that are largely forgotten. The next thing, which is quick, is that we are going to have a Gladstone Repair Fair, scheduled for May sixth, I think. Is that May sixth at the Senior Center?
Sounds right, yeah.
From nine o'clock to, nine AM to four PM. And what it is, it's sponsored by the county recycling program and then Sean Price, who is our robotics club guru, he's co-hosting it. And it brings people together that have little things that need to be repaired, like a toaster, a lawn mower, a, a hem that needs to be done, and it brings together the people that have those skills. So it's just bringing these people together that aren't handy to help things get done and they learn how to do those repairs in the process. So, Westland's done it, Milwaukee's done it, will be the third, and apparently it has just gone incredibly well. So May sixth will be the day. You'll see more and the county's paying for everything.
Senior Center, right? It'll be at the Senior Center, um, so hopefully we'll have a lot of good interaction with the youth and-
Yeah, the county's paying for all the advertising and so it's, it's gonna be a great event. So that's all I have. Anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn. Second?
Any more discussion? Motion made by Councilor Sickman, seconded by Councilor Reisner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourned in record time.